All right, we're gonna get started here in just a second. Soon as I can get myself squared away. How's everybody doing? All right, all right. Quiet. Real quiet. Not too many people here today. All right. Let's see here. Okay, all right. Are you in a hurry?
Hey, once a mayor, always a mayor.
Yeah, exactly. We will call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Looks like we had some pretty awesome prelude music from the Spirit of Great Oak Band. Where'd they go?
Jerry's right there.
Where? Jerry, are you there? Okay, there you guys are. Okay, I know we're gonna have a little presentation here in a minute, and we'll still have a video keyed up that's gonna be pretty cool to watch. And we heard it outside. Looks like they did some great prelude music. So first, thanks for that.[71.73][71.73][applause] So, let's start off our meeting with an invocation by Pastor Zachary Elliott of Fuseing Church. Pastor, are you here? Come on down. Always good to start with an invocation. And then we'll have a flag salute that will be given by Councilmember Matt Ron. Would you stand with me, please?
All right, let's pray. Lord, we're so thankful that you oversee the affairs of everyone. And we ask today that you would oversee the affairs that are gonna go on in this room. And we pray for wisdom. And I pray that every leader that sits in this room would ask themselves the question, "What would a godly leader do?" And I pray your blessing upon this city and upon the wonderful people that run it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Comacheri?
I'm here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember McCracken?
Here, ready.
Councilmember Ron?
I'm here.
And Nigar?
And I am present. First, we have some students in the house. Where are my wolf pack? Great Oak Wolf Pack? Show me some hands. Not too many, huh? Oh, just one over there? Okay, you're all by your lonesome? Okay. Golden Bears? Yeah, the Golden Bears are in the house. And Pumas? Chapparal Pumas? Okay, looks like the Pumas win tonight. This is our time for presentation and proclamations. We only have one, and it looks like it's gonna go to the Spirit of Great Oak Band. Jerry, why don't you and the group come on forward? I'm gonna go ahead and...[195.01][195.01][applause] I'm gonna read the proclamation, then we're gonna show a little video, and then gonna welcome some words from you, okay? So, "City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition Presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Temecula to the Spirit of Great Oak Band and Guard. The City Council congratulates the Spirit of Great Oak Band and Guard on their outstanding accomplishments at the state, national, and international level. The Spirit of Great Oak Band and Guard led by Director Jerry Burdick-Rutts has earned several awards and recognitions, including bronze medalists in the 2015 Winter Drumline Championships, 2014 Winter Drumline International Championships, finalists in placing seventh overall and the world, and the 2014 Winter Guard Association of Southern California Silver Medalist. The jazz ensemble performed at the American Cathedral in Paris, France in 2015. The band played in honor of Her Majesty the Queen of England's Diamond Jubilee New Year's Day Parade in 2013 and performed in the Grande Parade de Paris Champs-Elysées New Year's Day Parade in 2016." You like that, huh? Yeah, I've been practicing. "The students worked hard to raise money through fundraising events and received generous donations in order to perform at these notable events. We are proud of the Spirit of Great Oak Band and Guard members and their dedication and talent to music and the city of Temecula. We wish them continued success with their future accomplishments." Can we go ahead and roll the video? You can see it right on top there. It looks like you guys... Excuse me, looks like you had quite a run here the past couple of years, Jerry. Congratulations, you do such a marvelous job with the kids. Mayor Protem Edwards has your certificate. We'd definitely like to hear from you.
Here is your certificate, and we know that everywhere you go, Temecula goes. And what a fantastic showcase for our city. And we're so very proud of you, and keep up the good work. So where are you going next?
There's always, always something in store, and we're seeking, we're seeking a lot of different invitations, of course. We would like to get our drumline and color guard both back to the, to the international championships again. And we have some other things in the works that are even more challenging. Nothing better than raising the bar. Although, a lot of people would argue that the Champs-Élysées was pretty amazing, the world's most famous avenue. With us this evening is our drum major, Jasmine Lee, who had a chance to lead the band down the Champs-Élysées. You wanna say anything about that experience?
I think it's an experience that I won't forget, and for France as well, because they don't get parades like that. And one of the experiences was, we were marching down, and one of the ladies, we were in the middle of parade, and she just dragged me out to take a picture with me on the side of the sidewalk. And I think that's like the most memorable one.
Truly a memorable parade, and something that we're not accustomed to is the Parisians wanna be a part of the parade, so they are out taking selfies with us. And I can't tell you the number of times that we had some pretty emotional comments as well from the Parisians feeling like we were there to help them make their city feel like it's their city again, especially after November 13th. It felt good, so the timing was right, and it was an honor to be a part of that and representing our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope to have you back here before year's end, maybe for another presentation, okay?
I would love that.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
We do not, so that's good. I will dispense with reading the public comment rules and move right on over to city council reports. Do any of my colleagues have any reports to the community? It looks like Councilmember McCracken hit his button first. Councilmember?
So much for being the new guy, right? I got in the first this time.
That's right.
So, good afternoon, colleagues and Temecula residents. I have a couple of slides. Let me turn my video on so I can see them. So, my colleague, Mayor Comacheri and I hosted our second Military Veterans Community Service Network Organization. The next one's gonna be May 18th. This group stakeholders include representatives from organizations and government agencies that provide resources to local military and veteran families. The reason behind this organization is to bring the veterans together, organize and network. It's amazing how many times we've done this, the second time we've done it. And each time we do it, new groups show up to help streamline what they do. The benefit from that is our military and family members get the support. Being so far away from the military base, we feel sometimes we don't have any resource support system. But by doing these organizations this close, it helps us to show what resources that we have. The next meeting's gonna be May 18th, so we'd like to invite all those organizations that came last time to come again. And if you know someone who didn't come, please invite them down, 'cause it's a very good networking organization. Next slide, please. So, I'm probably still in my colleague's thunder, but I'm gonna take a chance anyway. Mayor Protem Edwards and myself and Matt Ron attended the Fire Station 73 Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. I've seen a few fire stations before during the ceremony, but this one, I really appreciate going. The benefit from this organization before, you don't see the before pictures, their sleeping area was all open bay. Imagine being a firefighter, you're out, you know, protecting the public, seeing the worst of things, rescuing kids and fires and things like that. They gotta, they gotta be able to decompress. So the original atmosphere was, it was all open bay. One big room, no privacy, no way to get away type thing. And I was able to take a tour. One of the firefighters gave me a tour, and we talked one-on-one. And the actual outcome of this, he said, is tremendous. It is the home away from home. So, my congratulations to the city, the colleagues before me that helped set this up. It's a big benefit for our firefighters, and I was glad to be a part of ribbon cutting ceremony. Next slide, please. So, I got a chance to attend the Riverside County Transportation Commission. It is amazing, all the great work that's going up there with the Caltrans and Riverside County Transportation Committee. The importance of this, of this meeting is our French Valley Parkway exchange. That project has been on the books for a while, and there's a chance, well, it's gonna be cut. Right now, it's budgeted for $41 million, and because of the budget in the state, they're gonna cut $70 million across the, across the state, four projects included. So, have confidence, and Senator Jeff Stone's office was there, speaking on behalf of us. And Mayor Protem Edwards, wearing two hats. Also Supervisor Chuck Washington spoke. The idea of them cutting the budget from us, right now the project's gonna be on hold, but we made very, very clear, we wanna be priority once funding came back. So, a little snag in the system, but we have a lot of people in our higher-ups that's rooting for us to keep this project going. And I have, I'd like to ask my colleagues indulgence on something. Been the newest council member, there's some things that I'd like to get done, and I'd like to seek your indulgence on it. If you'll allow me, permit it, I wanna have an education workshop. This workshop is gonna supplement our college fair that we're doing. I walk around and talk to different people during the college fair, and a lot of people come there, they're ill-prepared. They have no idea besides the college's gonna be here. They don't know what questions to ask. They are caught off guard about the financial responsibilities and what happens before and after. So in this workshop, what we're proposing is to cover financial aid, preparing for college, and those things that those who do this take for granted to make our residents better prepared when they come to these college fairs. So, looking at doing this around May-June timeframe, if it's consistent with my colleagues, and I'm more than open to a different time, if you will, but I think it's important, I think it's vital, that when we go places, we're prepared. My field is education, that's my background, and I even, I'm surprised about things that come up. So a lot of our residents, they might not have this. So, I've been working with staff on this. Like I said, if I could have your indulgence on that, it would mean a lot to me.
Yes, Mr. Comacheri.
Mike, I think that's certainly something that, that needs to be done. The only question I would have is that, you know, are we kinda stepping on the toes of the school district, and have we discussed it with them and brought them in to see what their input is and whether they want involvement or not? I think really that's, I'm not opposed to just doing it.
Yes.
I just think it would be kinda out of line for us to do it without their, at least, you know, indulgence, consent, input, whatever.
As the member of the Education Subcommittee, let's get together and go talk to Mr. Ritter, and we can see what do they need in the way of...
Excellent, excellent feedback, sir.
That's an excellent idea.
I take that approach, and thank you for the feedback, sir.
But with that, I mean, I think it's great, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Edwards, I noticed you were in the queue. Councilmember McCracken, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Mayor Protem Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to elaborate just a little bit on Councilmember McCracken's comments about the cuts to funding for French Valley Parkway. And I will tell you, those are coming to us from Sacramento through the California Transportation Commission, because the way the state funds infrastructure projects is convoluted, and it hasn't proven to be successful. They seem to have diverted funds that were designated for things like French Valley Parkway and used those funds on something else, and left the excise tax or part of the gasoline tax funds going to infrastructure improvement for freeways. Well, that's great, except right now, and I'm gonna say, woo-hoo, gas is below $2 a gallon, which I never thought I would see again in my lifetime. So that's the good news. The bad news is, is that the taxes collected for the infrastructure to maintain and repair California's freeways and other things are based on the gasoline sales and the price per gallon. So that's why the CTC has proposed cutting $800 million from the infrastructure improvement budget for the state. And of that $800 million, the county of Riverside is slated to lose four major projects, with French Valley Parkway being the largest, and I dare say the most important, because it will alleviate that cross-traffic backup that we have between the 15 and the 215 split every day, as people try and get over to the left to get to the 15, and they try to get on at Winchester and get, I mean, over to the right and get on at Winchester and get over to the left. We have all that cross-crossing, crisscrossing in the road, and you know the result. It backs up terribly every day. So unless the state finds a different way, a more stable way to fund infrastructure, we are going to see these types of things continue to occur, and, and local projects, which cities have taken on themselves. It is not the job of cities to build freeways, nor are most cities able to put together funding and have the wherewithal to build freeways. But Temecula has done so because of the failures of the state of California. California did not step up when we had fatalities on the southbound Winchester off-ramp, multiple fatalities. So Temecula took it upon ourselves to widen that as part of the French Valley Parkway. And Phase 1 of that project is finished, and it has made such a difference with multiple southbound off-ramps. So Phase 2 was going to be to alleviate the problem at the 15 and the 215 split by providing direct access to the 215 going north and from the 215 coming south without ever having to get off the freeway, or on the freeway. So, and I will say that Senator Stone and our local representatives in Sacramento are vociferously not just opposing this, but looking for alternate ways to support, to fund infrastructure. So, absolutely right, Mr. McCracken, and I wanted to give everybody some, some facts so they would know what, what's happening and why French Valley Parkway is at risk. And the other thing I wanna talk about, too, is we've had multiple water agency meetings over the course of the last year. We've hosted them at the city of Temecula. I've attended them as District Director for Senator Stone, as a council member, as a member of county commissions, and we continuously hear that there's a shortage of water. Well, I'm here to tell you, there is no shortage of water in Northern California, but there is, there is a lack of will to open the pumps and allow the 50,000 gallons per second of fresh water that flows out of the delta and straight to the sea every day to open those pumps and let it come down the aqueduct system to feed Southern California aquifers and reservoirs. The water is there, and in fact, if those pumps were opened every day for two weeks at full capacity, Diamond Valley Lake, the largest man-made reservoir west of the Mississippi, would be full in two weeks if they opened the pumps on the delta. And for the excuse of not opening the pumps, they have used typically environmental excuses, and I think it's important that we protect our environment. But in this case, when fish, when a fish this long outweighs the needs of Southern California's agricultural community and people who need drinking water, I think that's wrong. And surveys were taken of the delta smelt, and there was not a delta smelt within miles of the pumps when the last survey was taken. Yet those pumps have remained turned off for the past three months. So all of the El Nino rain that has fallen in Northern California, either in the form of snow that will come to us as melt or in the form of fresh water landing in the delta and running into the delta, it goes right back out to sea every day, because there are two people in Sacramento who are in charge of turning on the pumps every day. And at their discretion, we have water or we don't have water. So I wanted everyone to be fully aware. Even though there is a drought in California, in Northern California, there is ample water. They just refuse to turn on the pumps. So, I had a meeting with Congressman Calvert this week, and he is meeting with people in Sacramento. He wants to know who the two people are that make that decision every day to not send any water our way, even though it's there, running back into the ocean and being totally wasted. So, and Senator Stone feels the same way. Our representatives are fighting for us in Northern California. We need them to turn on the pumps. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron?
Oh, just a, just a couple of quick items to Councilmember McCracken's point on the education, you know, happy to help. I know we're on the Higher Ed Committee together. I'd recommend, you know, making sure we look at proper timing, especially for college applications and so forth. Early summer may not be the most appropriate, given that everybody's either graduated or moving into the summer, or, you know, fall might be a better time period. But I really recommend, we should also reach out, not just to the school district, as Councilmember Comacheri recommended, but also to the local colleges and universities as well.
Agreed. Quick one?
Go ahead.
I'm on the Higher Education Subcommittee. I'm also on a committee with Mary Ann Edwards, and that's that of three commissioners. Councilmember Roe thing about...
Brown and...
Yes.[1316.25][1316.25][laughing]
Oh, no, you'd have to do them separately.
Yes.
You would address higher education with Matt and...
Yes, but it's the same topic, so.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, so, thank you.
City manager will, will guide you through it.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. Anything else?
Yeah, and just a couple more points. We, Mary Ann and I were able to attend the ribbon cutting at Toyota dealership grand reopening, and just wanted to highlight one very interesting little tidbit. Our Toyota dealership here in Temecula is the fastest-growing Toyota dealership in the United States. So it's a pretty exciting distinction to have, and under new leadership, it's certainly coming a long way. So absolutely, that's all, that's all I've got for this evening, though.
Thank you. Seeing no one else is in the queue, looks like we'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion on these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any requests to speak on the consent calendar? All right, very good. Number one, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Get my glasses on. Approve the action minutes of February 9th, 2016. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve the city's participation in a police services joint powers authority feasibility study with contract cities at the request of Councilmember Comacheri. Five, approve an agreement with Michael Baker International for additional analysis for environmental impact report for proposed Temecula Creek Inn. Six, award a construction contract to Ag Happy Group, Inc. for Temecula Park and Ride PW06-09. Seven, approve the first amendment to the agreement for minor maintenance services with Craftsman Plumbing and Heating and Cooling, Inc. for routine maintenance services.[1444.44][1444.44][applause] And eight, grant non-exclusive easements to Rancho, California Water District in connection with the Interstate 15/State Route 79 South Ultimate Interchange PW04-08. And nine, establish a time-limited parking restriction on Ritter Court near Great Oak High School. I'll entertain a motion.
Move consent.
Second.
That was Councilmember Comacheri with a motion, a second by Mayor Protem Edwards. Please cast your vote. And all of those items pass with one vote, five to zero. At this time, I'm gonna recess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District meeting, and President Comacheri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight. Do we have any public speakers on this section?
We have one public speaker.
Okay, please call the speaker. Well, you know, we didn't call, read the rules before, right?
Because we had no speaker.
Yeah, so I'll read them now. Total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the Board of Directors on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the Board of Directors addressing that item. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or district business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the Board of Directors addressing that item, and each speaker, in that case, is limited to five minutes. May we have the speaker, please?
The only speaker is Mr. Rothschild.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is P.T. Rothschild. Thank you. I come here as a Temecula calendar to alert the members of a crisis that will concern you much more than the Liberty Quarry, something we also weighed in on with the city. This current concern is international, but the only way to combat this threat is to start at the local level. This threat will allow others to patent your wine seedlings, prohibit organic local food grow cultures like Old Town Saturday Farmer's Market, and outlaw food labels bearing such information. I've brought here as an example, something from Trader Joe's, how it will look after what I'm talking about goes through. You can check it for yourself. Exhibit A. This threat is called the Trans-Pacific Partnership, or TPP. It is one of three treaties now pending which will wrap up the entire world in a kit basket, ending individual futures, ushering in the United Nations of America. The calendar does not seek some official declaration of support. We merely come here to announce that you have 90 days to stop this. Please alert all your political connections of the coming disenfranchement of sovereignty, because this affects your lives and the futures of your loved ones. We offer paperwork on the subject for further research. Bernie Sanders, Donald Trump, and Hillary Clinton have all dissed this. Please pass this information along your channels. Thank you. The Temecula Calendar, P.T. Rothschild, Senior Editor.
Thank you, Mr. Rothschild. Appreciate it. No other speakers? Why don't you go ahead and give that to the clerk?
Oh, oh, thank you.[1688.04][1688.04][laughter] Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with no other speakers, we will go to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item 10 on the agenda, approve the action minutes of February 9th, 2016. And item 11, approve an agreement with Timmy D Productions Incorporated for entertainment and technical services.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Edwards, a second by Mr. McCracken. Please cast your votes. And that motion does pass 5-0. Do we have a director's report tonight? Mr. Hopkins?
Well, something brief, Mr. President. If a pitcher's worth a thousand words, here's a mouthful. That concludes my report.
Wow.
I like it.
I'm impressed. Mr. Adams, report from the executive director tonight?
Nothing further tonight.
Thank you. Any board member reports? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of March 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any opposed? Will stand adjourned.
At this time, I'm gonna reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Let's have a look here. Do we have a city manager's report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just two quick items. You've heard me talk about this. We're in the middle of a "Join the Conversation" campaign. You can find information on the city's website. Essentially, we're encouraging... Essentially, we're encouraging all members of this community to participate in a really brief survey. It will take less than a minute of your time. You can go online, tell your friends, tell your coworkers, but we're really interested in what your priorities are today. And as we go through budget and we prepare for budget, this is really important for the city of Temecula. Secondly, our office has received a lot of correspondence related to red light runners, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to put it out there to everyone, and we're monitoring a lot of the social media chatter surrounding concerns about red light running. I want to assure everyone that our police department, our traffic enforcement, is monitoring major intersections yet, and issuing citations, yet they can't be everywhere. Simply put, we need residents to abide by the traffic laws that we have here. I'd also like to dispel the myth that issuing traffic citations is a major revenue generator. I spoke to Police Chief Kubel, who was in the back of the room today, about red light runners and our enforcement activity. Just to put it in perspective, in calendar year 2015, our police department issued over 19,000 citations. So some of the chatter that we're seeing is that we're not doing enough, we're ignoring the problem, we're not issuing citations. 19,000 citations were issued last year. This generated less than $100,000 to the city of Temecula. So again, it's not a revenue generator. They're writing citations to keep you honest and to keep our intersections and our roadways safe. We have a traffic team of 14 traffic officers, including 10 motors, patrolling a city 33 square miles in geography. In January of this year, we issued 1,355 citations. So we'll be responding to residents, but I just wanted to let the city council know we're on this. We have an incredible amount of resources within the police department, and I think this is probably an appropriate item to bring back to the Public Traffic Safety Commission. So I've already talked to Chief Kubel, I've talked to Tom Garcia, our Public Works Director, and so in the very near future, we'll be bringing this back for more of a receive-and-file item, answer questions, and evaluate sort of the intersections that are allegedly being neglected. Also, the police department will be moving their resources. So we're aware of the issues, we're aware of the concerns that we're hearing, and we're on top of it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Comacher?
Really quickly, thank you, Mr. Adams. I think it's worthy to note as well that, I don't know, I never counted, but somewhere near an equal number of emails that we all get in the council come from people who got a citation and said, "Why are our policemen everywhere waiting for us?" And so, you know, it just brings up that there's got to be an appropriate balance, and I think we achieved that balance, so I agree with what you said. The laws are there for a reason. Obey the laws, and nobody has to deal with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. City Attorney's report?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we had no reportable actions from closed session tonight.
All right, very good. How about Commissioner Swank and the Community Services Commission? Anything, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Couple things tonight. Often you'll get from Director Hawkins sort of look forward, I'll give you a look back. This month, we had the opportunity, the Community Services Commission had the opportunity to attend a couple ribbon cuttings, if you will, or dedications that I think are important. The Everbright at the Penny Pickles was just fabulous, to see these kids smiling, and to see that theater or that museum evolve is really nice to see, as someone who's been to it a lot with my children. So it's really nice to see that. And then the library dedication yesterday, something that I want the people to know is what went into making that library? And I think that's an important part for our local history, all the effort that went into that. So, from the Community Services Commission, it was just an honor to be a part of those two events this last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swank. Commissioner Gario, Planning Commission?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. We approved a condition use permit for one of our hotels to give them the availability to compete with other hotels on Jefferson Avenue, so that was a big thing. And Thursday morning, we're having a subcommittee meeting for the expansion of the Promenade Mall, so looking forward to that one. And that's it, not as exciting as these guys, but there you have it.
I think the Promenade expansion is pretty exciting.
Very good, very good. Commissioner Bob Hagel, Traffic Safety Commission?
Thank you, good evening. Is this on? Okay, it is on, all right, because this was not working before. This Thursday, we are reviewing Nighthawk Pass for traffic calming. It has been an issue for a lot of years. Speeding is an issue there. I know one of the things we're going to look at is something I don't know if the city has done before, but is constructing bulb bouts, which will definitely slow down traffic. So that's something that's on the agenda. We're also looking at speed limits on 43 sections of roads and looking at the possibility of reducing and increasing speed limits based upon today's traffic. A couple other things. One of the things that is in the police report that you've probably seen is 71 cellphone sites, and one of the things about the cellphone sites is it's not just people using their cellphone while they're driving, it is anything that is distracting while they're driving, and 71 is far too many. It is a very, very dangerous thing to do. Some of our worst traffic accidents are caused by distracted driving, and so I just ask the public to, you know, if you're going to get on the phone, pull over. If you're going to read a book, do it at home. It's amazing, all the things that we've seen people doing while they're driving. So another thing that's important that doesn't get mentioned very often is the number of hours our Civilian Action Patrol puts in. We have 797 hours of volunteer time just in the month of January alone, and over 1,200 hours altogether from a group of about 70, 70 volunteers. And they do it, you know, out of the love of their heart for our city and save us just incredible amount of money. And so I just wanted to mention them. And the last is an unsung hero group, and that is Rodney Tidwell and Public Works. They are always behind the scenes, keeping the city clean, doing weed abatement, taking care of sitting water so that we don't have mosquitoes and other problems, and just everything you can imagine that's on our public lands is taken care of by them. And they lead our city in keeping the city a great-looking city, and I think we have our residents also have a lot of pride in the city, and they follow that lead and keep Temecula looking like a great city. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagel. Well, now it's time to say goodnight. I'll entertain a...
Move adjournment.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.